So we're going to call our second meeting of the month to order at 7:05. This is our second meeting of the month. I know it's November, but we've shifted everything a week because of some other issues amongst members. We're glad that you could be here. Presentations are made by the board on various topics. Our administrators are presenting updates and the board committees are authoring reports on their activities. Questions can be directed to members after the meeting. Executive session, if needed, is a portion of the meeting where the board discusses legal personnel or student issues. These matters are confidential. The board needs to meet privately for this portion. After exec, we will reconvene and take action on issues if needed. And you may return to this meeting at this time if you wish. And because we have shifted everything, if you haven't seen our updated agenda, I shouldn't say updating agenda, updating the updated meeting schedule, we need two weeks for our standard business meeting of the month.
Seventeen.
Is that right?
Yes.
On our first presentation is our K-12 library services.
We are very excited tonight to have Mrs. Mountainato and Mrs. Jones with us to share with you some of the exciting things that they are doing in terms of providing library and information technology instruction.
One sheet plus two sheets.
Thank you. Can I use my browser to, sorry, can I use your browser to display on the board?
Pardon?
Dot W E B D L Y.
B.
Dot com. And if you look on the parents tab. Okay? I'm excited to be able to introduce you to some of the ideas that are being developed in the K-12 libraries. Could you scroll down to, that's fine. Okay, so I wanted to introduce you to our mission statement as we have put it together. The libraries at Canada Harry's Central School provide personalized learning environments and offer equitable access to resources in order to ensure a well-rounded education for every student. And so we're looking to develop a learner-centered environment. And probably one thing that you've noticed is that especially in the elementary, things have changed. It was a really amazing opportunity to be able to do this shift from a traditional block schedule in the library to something more, it would be called integrated library instruction. So the goal is that every classroom, first through fifth grade, will have one project every quarter that is in-depth. It goes into information literacy and inquiry, research strategies. And there's a product every quarter. I'm not sure if everybody's gotten the newsletter yet. So one of the things I have recently come to understand is that there is more need for communication with parents. And so I put together a newsletter highlighting some of the collaborations. Oh, I'm sorry.
I've never been to one of these.
I'm set up for us too.
Yeah, this is a new word.
I suggest one of the board members sitting in front of her so she can just speak to the audience and the board members at the same time. Look at it, just look at it.
If that's what you'd like.
We can make your turn here.
It's fine.
Oh, you don't have to.
I'm sorry.
That's fine. I just feel awkward.
It's okay. I'm sorry. I'm learning all kinds of things about schools.
You know, it's a presentation to us.
Yes, okay.
And so for me, I want you to be looking at us. And that's for everybody else. So we'll all sit together and everybody's.
That'll be nice. So the first piece of paper that you have, it's a single sheet of paper, is the newsletter that I have developed. And I'd like to make it a monthly thing to try to make it to that online resources that could be used at home and could be used by students with parents or independently, so that there's more awareness that those exist. I also wanted to highlight collaborations that had some pretty amazing outcomes, like second graders, they did an art project inspired by Ezra Jack Keats. I got a grant to do these amazing illustrations with second graders. And their exhibit is going to be part of the Centennial Ezra Jack Keats Foundation celebration, yeah. On the back, I also am highlighting some collection developments because collections, even though we talk so much about technology and the new idea of how to make library information literacy happen, books are still at the core of that. Love of literacy is still at the core of that. But I wanted to direct your attention to this sheet next. So when you hear from Tammy, you'll understand a little bit more why these seven survival skills that look very kind of futuristic and businessy are on librarians' minds. Critical thinking and problem-solving skills, collaboration across networks, leading by influence, agility and adaptability, initiative and entrepreneurship, effective oral and written communication, assessing and analyzing information, curiosity and imagination. So Tony Wagner, who is a thought leader in changes in education, came up with these by talking to business leaders and realized that these are the things that potential employers are looking for and they're not seeing enough of. If you flip the page one more time, you'll see, you may have heard of future-ready schools. Future-ready libraries is a component of that. And probably there are still a lot of misconceptions about a librarian's role figuring out. So these kind of job aspects might clarify why librarians are getting so much into tech and so much into collaboration and project-based learning.
Right. Yes. Okay, hang on just a minute. I have to open my presentation for you. Just so I have my visuals. And I didn't want to offset Audrey's. I'm just going to log in real quick. If the internet lets me log in real quick. I took your keyboard. Whoops, I didn't do my app though. I have a real short password, so don't worry. All right, so the high school library, oh, wait, we're loading up here, is building off what comes to us. Audrey covers both the elementary school and a little bit at the middle school. And it is, we're working on getting a seamless transition. So she was talking about some of the collaboration. If you can hit that little arrow down there pointing to, that's the one. Thank you. So our information fluency curriculum still happens at the high school. I teach 36 weeks from the time a student arrives in ninth grade all the way until they graduate. It comes out to 36 weeks they spend with me learning their information fluency curriculum. We do things starting in ninth grade. It's all project-based learning. It comes, those 36 weeks only include English, social studies, and the major math projects that we do. That doesn't count all of the other peripheral things. So we have a graduated nine through 12 information fluency curriculum. It's all research papers. And I have my syllabus up here. It's a little bit outdated already because the projects change every year. And it's already outdated because I met with the ninth grade teachers today. And we have a new project we're doing next week. So it's already not quite accurate. But that piece is still in place. And there it is. One more. And I can't go without bragging, our pictures aren't a little too great to see, but we got brand-new laptops last year with dock stations. And that has changed the atmosphere of the library tremendously. Because as you can see, in the upper corner, we have Ms. Lowry, who was in today teaching her math class. And I took these photos this morning. She was leading a group, there we go, she was leading a group at the Smartboard through a little mathematical problem that gave me a headache. But the other three are when those kids were done with that little piece, they could pick up their laptops and move about the library and either work independently, or we have two that were working together over in the other area. They could get up, walk around, keep working. And when they were finished, very easily walk back over and put the laptop down where it could charge. So that has made a tremendous difference. And it also enables us to have one big class going on and smaller ones at the same time for the kids who are in its study hall. So that's a really terrific development. And we're excited about that. We still do literacy and we work on inspiring readers. So in the curriculum, it is built in every grade level. We do an independent reading project where students choose their own book. They have to read the whole book. And we have several different projects that they have to put together and present to one another. That's a picture of our ninth graders' independent reading. We do a little book tasting where we set up the library like a restaurant. Lucas is laughing because he remembers that one. That one's a lot of fun. Patty, excuse me. We do have a battle of the books team. We're just getting one at the middle school level. I'm very excited about that. We're going to beat Glover'sville this year. I can tell. I can just feel it coming. We read 16 books. And we have a Jeopardy-style tournament in March where we compete against, we are up to now eight other school districts. We compete against them to try to be champion of the world. So that's the other thing we do there, Patty. And of course, I have a fully flexible schedule, which means the library is always open. If school's in session, we're open. The doors are open. And our schedule is posted right on our website. If you ever want to see what we're up to, come on in. The ones we want to talk about today, though, are what Audrey said, those seven skills that employers need to see in the kids who are graduating from here. And she went through them, so I'm not going to do that to you. But I did put a link there to the video. And you can get that from me later if you want to hear Tony Wagner explaining. It's a long one, yes. We have two tiers right now that are feeding into that. We have a student-run IT help desk that runs out of the library. And that is now spawning an innovation lab. So it's all coming from what the students are telling us. And the IT help desk, basically, is run by students. They give up their study hall and they come and they stay with me in the library. And we help, we help students, we help teachers, we help staff. Because the kids know a lot more about those technological devices than I do. You can hit it one more time. This was our report from last year. Last year, we had 20 interns. We served 127 adults at the school. It looks like we only served 38 of those. But the truth is, I ended up putting most of the jobs in. Teachers would rather call me and say, can you put that in? So that, it looked like I was putting them all in. But the kids logged 1,267 hours of IT help. And they translated that for us. The average IT worker makes $23.56 an hour. The work the kids did translates, if we paid them, $29,872 for the students going out and helping people use all the tech. So I thought that was a pretty good deal. We are on, if you give me another tap there, Patty. In case you're available, our tech ambassadors on November 16th are going to be down at the Arkell Center, offering some free tutoring and some tech help. So come on down and see us. And they'll teach you how to take pictures of your grandchildren and email me in case you don't know how to do that, because they're really good at that kind of thing. They had actually taught me how to take a movie, and I'll show it to you at the end. Take a movie, edit it in iMovie, and post it with transitions and special effects and everything. And I'll write from my phone. Give me another hit there, Patty. So this was, this is how we spawned that. The kids years ago, about three years ago now, lobbied Debbie and said, hey, if we're doing $30,000 worth of work here, we should get some credit for this instead of just being volunteers. And Debbie agreed. But there had to be some criteria for that. So this is our computer science internship program. There are still volunteers for the kids who don't want to take quite that level of work and just want to volunteer. But there's also built in a credit-bearing track. And the major components to the credit-bearing track is they have to do an independent project, they have to get their certification in IT help desk, and they have to teach a lesson to the other interns on some form of technology. So if you can give me one more. That led to the development of our innovation lab, especially the independent project. I gave you a handout. Last year, one of those independent projects was to redesign the library to better fit the needs of what those kids want. And that is the last page that I gave you. One of our students last year, who has since graduated, designed a lab based on a student who is very interested in computer science and what they would want in the library and what it would look like. The other student examined it from an artistic student's point of view and what they would want. And we were able to, with a third student this year, combine those two into that, into this little plan. So the key word is versatility they're looking for. And I'll let you look at all of the others. But basically, they want everything in the library to be mobile and movable, everything right down to the furniture. And Patty, if you can, you have this. So basically, that kind of looks like our library the way it is now, except every one of those pieces would be moved. It would be on wheels. And that furniture exists. And that's right down to the bookcases. The bookcases can be moved around. You can make any kind of configuration with them.
Where's the tree?
The trees are actually downstairs right now. I do have about five plants left. One of my interns takes very good care of those. This is what one of my students is looking at. She looked at what we have and how can we use what we already have and maybe do a little painting. She wants to paint some of the glasses with dry erase paint so that the kids can write on things and all of that good stuff. And she's trying to figure out how to get wheels on the bottom of our bookcases. We'll see how that goes. The main thing was that the computers can no longer be tied to the wall. The thing the kids want to do is, we're close to it. We still have dock stations. We're a little tough. But eventually, kids want to pick up a device, use it, walk around, go where they need to with it, and have a place where they can put it down and it will charge when they put it down. Now, the dock, they still kind of have to hook in. But we're getting there. Technology's catching up. One more, Patty. This is the shopping list of all the things that they're looking for. Anything highlighted in yellow, I've already purchased. The rest is their wish list. It's not mine. It's theirs. Thank God, my husband has retired. And right now, he does estate sales. So when he's cleaning out people's desks, he knows to keep certain things for me to keep me upstairs. And it's a great price. It's free. And they also gave me a list. The kids have been racking their brains of places where we can beg for supplies. So we're working on that this year. Patty?
Where'd you go?
Yep, yep. Oh.
Which one?
Keep going. Keep hitting it. I think you, go ahead. And again. And again. We're almost there. I don't know what happened, but keep going. One more. And again. There we go. That's a picture of what our shelves look like. We're just trying to get all those little pieces and parts. Arduinos come with, oh my God, these little teen transistors. And I had to get very special cases for one Arduino, so those little transistors don't go missing. And then the last one, I'm going to show you what that's going to look like. Because I caught them today. I snuck up on them. And Patty, if you raise that up a little bit. Yep, if you could hit that play button.
This?
Yep. Oh, nope.
No.
This only takes a minute. Oh, here we go. And here we go. So here's what it kind of looks like in action.
And this name, James Andrew. Okay. So here we are. We have all this film. But we're going to do, we're going to try this onto the timeline. If there wasn't a timeline, because something happened, I don't know. Don't film this.
I told them it was getting footage for the portfolio.
We press over button and we don't have a timeline.
Should we just like?
Yes, here we start the program.
But there's not really an electric outlet near there that I'd be going without hurting someone else.
The next light panel is over here.
Yeah.
See, you hang around Jerry too long and she puts you right to work. They will redesign the floor plan.
What is it you're working on? I'm making clouds for a balloon that's from the store in Halloween.
What have you got Fallon doing over there?
I have been making the hearts that I will be hotbeding Cassie's robe for her group goddess costume, because she's acridite, which is beauty. So hearts both get the point of crossing, which is.
So those are our students that work. That's the idea of the innovation lab. Right now, I have 12 interns because I was getting exhausted with 20. But I have, I also have five more who are kind of demanding that they want to be in. And they'll be joining us the second half of the year. So that's where we're going. And it's all student-led. And I want those kids to get those jobs. And hopefully, when we have a pool of kids who get those jobs, those jobs will come here. And unlike me, our babies can stay here because mine right now have to move away. And I want them to come back. So that's our goal. Oh, yes, question. You face that way.
Two questions. One question, one request. The question I have is for the elementary library.
Yes.
You're talking about the future-ready libraries. How, it looks very exciting. It sounds very exciting. How far along are we there? And where do you see the likelihood of getting there?
So the likelihood of getting there is great if we keep pushing forward. There are areas, so if you look, for instance, designing collaborative spaces, libraries are kind of by nature collaborative, but we're getting more and more collaborative. Building instructional partnerships, that is when I am working with classroom teachers and kind of starting that as a norm in the building to do collaboration, empowering students as creators. They're creating with each project, curating digital resources and tools. That's on my website, if you get a chance to look at the website, which is candok5wegly.com. It has like an amazing amount of digital resources available for students. So I could probably hunk through and list lots of things. But I think that it's a viable future, this.
Step one was to hire a librarian who was in the Navy as an electrician. Check. Got that.
And then my request would be that, you know, like I said, I'm very excited to hear the kinds of things that are going on. I had no real sense of, you know, how much was going on. But I'd also like to request that you try to come up with ideas for what it is that you would need to get to the next level, you know, resource-wise, and submit that to Debbie so that, you know, we can get a sense of that. And they'll be considering that when we're looking at either grants or budgeting.
Well, you have the, what the students are asking for at the high school. They, they, they.
I have the updated list, but I have a list from last year.
Yep. So yeah, all I have to do is say to the kids, what do you want? And oh, boy.
So we would love to, at least I would love to, I think we all would love to see that some, have some way to kind of wrap our heads around it. So thank you.
That would be absolutely fun to put together. Yes.
On the same topic, the future-ready and related, which area do you think we're lagging behind in?
So equitable digital access, we know that that's an issue. It is apparent when you're seeing students work with digital tools, who has access and who does not. And that's, well.
How is it apparent?
Typing. Even as basic as typing, some students in seventh, eighth grade aren't able to type their username within a minute. It just takes a lot longer to navigate things that you would get used to if you were using digital tools on a regular basis. I would also say investing strategically in digital resources. And this is, and we're going there. Yeah.
For me, at the high school, the thing that we, where we tend to, what we're trying to undo is students still are arriving to us expecting us to tell them what they're going to learn and how they're going to learn it and walking them through it. And my CSIs, when they get there in ninth grade, are always a little blown out of the water because they'll look at me and go, so tell me what I'm supposed to do. And I said, no, you tell me what are you interested in learning? And they're, they're just, they're a little, what do you mean? And I said, well, what would you like to learn for the year? You have to come up with an independent project. And every once in a while, even once they've made that decision for the first few months, they'll come to me and go, I don't know how to do this. And I'll have to look and go, I don't know how to do that either. Let's go see what we can figure out. And it's very amazing when they realize that they're allowed to try something and it might not work the first time. And I love their faces. They're like, it failed. It didn't work. I don't know what to do. And I say, so let's try again. That blows them out of the water a little bit because they think they got an app. And you don't get an app for trying it and it didn't quite work out. I've never used an Arduino before. Mr. Sotola and I have been having quite the time trying to figure out how to get that one with transistor to come on. So we learn together. And I think it's a little discomforting for students when they first arrive because they expect me to have all the answers. And we're here to find the answers. Because critical thinking isn't knowing the answer. Critical thinking is coming up with a question. And they, that first question that I give them is, what do you want to learn? That, that just, they have to ask, what, what do I want to learn?
So follow-up on that, and then I'll go back to two words as well. How do you think you could appropriately measure success in critical thinking in your students?
That one for me, the way I built it into our program, it's multi. It's not that simple. There's no multiple choice test. They choose what they want to learn. They have to choose the project and the final result of the project. I have them navigate through the design process and tell me each step that they followed. So they have to explain to me what they tried, what worked, what didn't, what did they do when it didn't work. So there's that law. They have to keep a portfolio of everything they did throughout the year. And it has to be presented in a creative and unique way where they have to emphasize their knowledge of technology. So there's that piece as well. They have to actually know something well enough to teach a 40-minute class. So they can't just say, I know and show me. They have to get someone else to understand it as well. In fact, a group of 17 others who have to understand it.
Are there benchmark standards that we could use, like a rubric for those components?
Yes. For standards, for CSI, I usually tend to use the ISTI standards. But it also flies in with those seven skills. It covers every single one of them. So if you want to use those seven innovation skills as well. And of course, accessing information is one of our library skills. So that fits right in.
I wanted to go back. Just your interaction, you said one of the things that you thought was a biggest issue was the equitable digital access.
Right.
From your interaction with students and your estimation, what percentage of the student population that you're working with do you think are not having access?
That's really hard to quantify, but I would say pretty close to 50. As far as, as far as having access and using it, fish head. Yeah, having access and being able to use it in more than an Yeah, having access and you, and being able to use it in more than an entertainment value.
Yeah, kids are very good at entertaining themselves with the devices. It's our job to teach them how to educate themselves and teach them how to use it as a tool to get things done. Now you know what librarians do now. They don't, what about books? I'm like, yes, we still do that, but a librarian, that's what we teach.
Do you have any guesses as to, as to a?
I would say at the high school, it depends because some of them, even if they have a device, it's an old device, it's unreliable. So they don't have reliable access. And as Patty said earlier, we do have places around us that have absolutely no internet service. So there's that aspect. They know how to use it at school, but once they leave school, they have nothing. And so it's, it's, I would say, at the high school, I'm seeing around thirty percent of the kids who really don't have reliable, seamless access. And they can't function in the world without it. They've got to have that.
Thank you.
Anything else? One more question?
Sure.
I was very excited to read Mrs. Ward's administrative notes that we got at the end of the meeting. Talking about the distance learning that's happening already in the elementary library. And what I'd like to request is that that information be, when they are going to be taking place, if you know in advance, which I assume you do. That, that information be relayed to the superintendent's office and then it can be given to the board members in case any of us might be free to attend it just to say, oh, sure.
Every single time that we've done distance learning with the elementary students, it's been kind of a magical thing. They're really excited about it.
So if you could just kind of give us some advanced points and opportunities coming up.
And Mr. Brody, the printer you gave us last year, um, they did a diagnostic on it and it turns out there was a lot of cat hair. It means your cat likes sleeping on your printer. Mine used to do that too because it is warm. They were able to clear it and get the colored ink working, but unfortunately there was a little piece in the black ink that was broken. And when we called, it's actually more expensive to replace that carrier than it is buying a new printer. But they were, they, they had more fun pulling it apart and that was their diagnosis was, was cat hair, so. Watch your new printer.
It's a correct, it's a correct diagnosis.
Watch your new printer because your cat apparently likes to navel. Twenty-three and fifty.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you so much.
Next we have our pathways to graduation.
This is an informational piece. I'm gonna have a little take one of that. At your July, July retreat, this was an area that you were interested in receiving some information about. It does, it does not equitably distribute. So the four plus one multiple pathways to graduation is a structure that was put into place um, for helping students meet graduation requirements. So tonight we're gonna share two different areas with you. One of the original four plus one that was available in. Oh. Or just one of them? Yeah, maybe just one light. Thank you.
What, the other one?
Look at them. They could, we could pass those through. We have a couple of extras that you guys could just put in the audience with, to share. So the multiple pathways to graduation is a way to help some students meet graduation requirements. So in two thousand and fifteen, this option became available for those students who were in the two thousand and eleven cohort. Remember that? Two thousand and eleven cohort is your entering ninth grade year. In order to access one of these pathways, which are humanities, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, career tech, education, the arts, and biliteracy, which is foreign language. In order to access one of these pathways as a graduation option, students have to pass four of the five required regions and then at least one of the following approved tests in one of these areas. So what we have done is taken a look at who students are as they move through their education career that might best be served by this, by having a multiple pathway to graduation. There is still a twenty-two credit graduation requirement. That has not changed. Um, and districts do have some things that they can do in terms of thinking about how students can access the multiple pathways. So, here's where we are right now. We use, first of all, we encourage all of our students to work hard to meet the region's requirements for the five required regions for a region's diploma. We use program planning to do that. That's a term we've used quite a bit in the past year, so we just like to throw it out there every once in a while. But for a few of our students who show continued difficulty with meeting the requirements of one of the required regions exams and have shown some skill abilities and skill strengths in some other areas, we take a look is that can we use four of the regions plus one of the following um, other areas to allow them to get their high school diploma. So we use this sparingly right now. Where the interesting part is, and I've had some conversations with folks, is in the arts pathway, those tests came out a little bit later. And as soon as they came out, I sent them right off to all of our arts folks. Because the arts pathway has the opportunity for students to look at taking additional AP exams or international, international, baccalaureate, sorry. I have a trouble talking tonight. IB, which we don't do. Um, but it gives them the opportunity to get an arts pathway by looking at some additional AP exams. In your, in the public section of the board's um, stuff online, excuse me, the board docs online, I've put not only this document, but all the other supporting documents. So you can see what the tests are that are available. You can also see what is, what is permitted. And that's really important. So it has to be a permitted, a test that's permitted by the state. For some of our students who are career and tech ed students, the pathways to graduation might offer them a different opportunity. Again, you have to have four of your regions. You might use a CTE test as well and you still have to have the twenty-two credits. Same thing with STEM, same, same thing with humanities. So this is something that's only been in existence for a year, going on the second year right now. In June of two thousand and sixteen, and this is your second handout, an additional piece came out. And I'm gonna ask Mrs. Schwabra to explain the second piece, which is the graduation pathways for students with disabilities. Oh, and then your other handout.
Would you like video?
Yes.
Um, there are still options for a local diploma for students with disabilities and those students with 504 combination plans that have it specified on their plan. Um, so these students, they still must obtain the same amount of credits as general appears. Um, but it does allow them to score a little bit lower on a few of the regency exams. But still, students will still need to obtain a fifty-five or higher on English Language Arts exam and a math exam, which is typically an algebraic exam. So that is the local diploma that is, like I said, open to students with disabilities and they have an IP and those with 504 plans that have that on their, on their form. A new plan that came out, a new option that came out last year was a superintendent determination of graduation with a local diploma. And they're still kind of fine-tuning this, although we did use it last year for a student. This is only available for students with disabilities that have individualized education plans, so it's not open to 504 students. But what this does is it allows, um, it allows the superintendent to determine if a student has demonstrated mastery or fluency within the, uh, the curriculum in all of the major core subject areas, so ELA, math, social studies, science. What am I gonna say? No, the other one was, we know, social studies. It allows those students to get a fifty-five again, who must have a fifty-five in the English Language Arts and in math. But the other class, the other assessments, the regency exams, the student needs to attempt those exams and demonstrate that they have been working to achieve mastery or proficiency in those areas. So the parent has the option of petitioning the superintendent. That's the latest guidelines that came out to say, I would like my child to be reviewed. They have, they meet these requirements. And this is spelled out for you on this document. What they have to do and we have to show that the student, yes, has passed these classes successfully. They have early credits, but what's standing in their way are those exams. So that, those are two ways of getting a local diploma, which still counts as a diploma. If you flip over your paper, these are non-diploma high school. I didn't name it for none. Okay, so these are just credentials. Um, the first one is the CDOS. That is the Career Development Occupational Studies that does tie on, tie in now. It's being opened up to general ed peers as well originally. It was just kind of crazy because usually things start in general round and then they're, they're shifted into the special ed round. Well, we got the opportunity to be the first ones. Um, so rolled out in the special ed round and they're seeing the value of it and they're, um, they are giving opportunity for general ed students to also work towards this credential. Basically what it is, is the student has to meet two hundred and sixteen hours of coursework in CTE classes. So many of our students traditionally at this time are, are getting a lot of those coursework, you know, with, with Mr. Hariff in, in family consumer science classes, in business classes, as well as when they attend classes at the CT center. So we have several students receiving those credits there. And on top of that, they need to also have fifty-four hours of workplace learning. So they have to go into the community, they often have a job coach. Um, we, our students that are in the CT classes get that as part of their program, so they will get those hours. I'm actually sending one of our special ed teachers to a training to see how we can best facilitate that within our district here so that we can have students that might not choose to go with one of the CT programs, but is still able to have that workplace learning and explore those areas. So that's something that we're continuing to develop here. And the last credential, again, this is not a diploma and I make that very clear when I speak with parents, this is, this is all as a group here. Um, this is only available to students that, um, have severe disabilities. Okay, so this is like your alternative assessment students. Um, and they have to take alternative assessments at scheduled times throughout their educational career. And this is just stating when they have mental health requirements. So those are what's available for specifically tied into students with disabilities.
So there are multiple options for plus ones in these areas for all students. And students with disabilities have an additional option that was added in June of two thousand and sixteen. That's an information overview about the pathways.
Two questions. One is about the, um, the local diploma. I was just wondering, what is the utility of that diploma for a student?
It's, it's an, I'm surprised, and I answer that a lot. Um, it actually, it's, it's a diploma.
It's like, I graduated high school.
You got it. And that's why I make that distinction between CDOS credential versus a diploma. So that people are aware that it is a diploma.
And that could be used for applied to college or community college.
Yeah, I mean, they still look at New York State, it's still looked as, you know, it's a local diploma. But yes, it's still, like especially if you have students entering the workforce, it is a diploma. I graduated from high school. Well, we're, CDOS is a credential. I fulfill these requirements. It's still exiting. It's still a, I have done my, I used to have high school, but it's a credential.
Could give a child, could apply to high school.
Actually, we're the only state where that acknowledges a region versus a local. So if you go to others, it's just a diploma. So it's not even a.
My other question had to do with the multiple pathways. In the art pathway, any discussion there about music? Because it looks like it's just English and, and art.
Right, no, there is, there is, if you look at the approved assessments for the arts, and again, this took a little bit more time than the others. And I, the, um, all of our arts department chairs have this. We've had some preliminary discussions about what they might want to do. So I've sent them back to take a look at how they might want to look at it. There is music and, I'm looking at it, actually, because I just. It's AP music theory. And I'll tell you why, Mark. There's a separate document on here that has all the arts listed. Because again, that came out a little bit separately. So it's AP music theory. No, that's okay. There's a whole list of things, but the second page at the top. And again, all this is out on the community, on the public site, so it'll all be, it's available. It's AP music theory. There was quite a lot of discussion about what tests to look at for the arts. Our former colleague, Lori Orstano-James, was a part of this committee and helped determine what some of these tests were for the state. So what we have is there's a couple of AP tests in art, there's an AP test in music, and those, we are looking at those as possible pathways. And I have not yet had a conversation because the biliteracy piece is again, another late entry, or not late entry, but the, the regs are coming out a little bit later, about how we might do something with that.
So this is maybe not a complete list of potential.
No, that's it for right now, for the arts. That's it.
Potentially could expand.
No, I think that's pretty much gonna be it.
What is the biliteracy?
I'm sorry, hold on.
One at a time.
Sorry, I'm sorry. What's the goal? You go first. We'll work our way down the table.
I was just wanting to go further down now.
Yes, yes.
Was the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program Music. Would we be able to develop something like that if there is an interest in it?
I, that would. That's a lot, it's a lot of work. I don't know a whole lot about IB, but I do know that it's a lot of work. And if we were to do that, that would best be done more probably regionally, where it might be a collection of schools. But I have to be honest with you, I've, I've not really looked too much at IB.
Because this sounds very exciting, very challenging.
Yes.
So I, I would love to see that go through this, you know, go to the presentation.
Sure. What we can do though, and because we already have a structure for AP exams, at least in the short term, that would be the way to go. Because we already have that structure here at the high school. So that if we wanted to look at implementing something sooner rather than later, AP would definitely be the way to start. IB is a whole different, it is a whole different setup.
I don't remember the term she used that was new.
What? Oh, biliteracy?
Yes.
Yes, biliteracy means that you are biliter in English and another language. So you have two languages.
Where is that on this document? I'll see.
It's not on the test for the, the music for the arts. It is on, it's on this one right here. It's the last little pathway. The document we're looking at is just the assessments for the arts. There are other documents on there with other assessments. Because, as we know, to put it all together in one nice, easy-to-follow structure would be challenging. Well, this is our, this is the information part. So the, the purpose is to share, so it is to share the information and then let you have all the supporting documents that you would need.
I had a question on the graduation pathways that you covered. What, which ones of those count from a statistics perspective on our school scores, for lack of a better word, holistically, as graduates?
The other ones show as exiting. It's a credential showing that you exit, but I don't believe it's, it's shown that way on our, on our stats.
Right. For data accountability purposes, the local diploma counts as a completer. The students with credentials count as exiting, non-exiting. Which really is just for accountability purposes.
No matter what their disability level is.
Yeah, correct. Yes. Yes. That's not changing any time soon. No, because again, that's federal accountability. Unless something changes under the Every Student Succeeds Act and the New York State makes a different piece of accountability, then that might change. But right now, accountability rules still fall under No Child Left Behind. And that's part of those rules.
I didn't remember that discussion being part of what we were in at all.
It was, it was very cursory in terms of that night we went, that you and Jacob St. Martin and I were there. Yeah, it was just one of those six categories, but it wasn't specific within the six.
That would be an important one to give some feedback on, if we still have the ability to get that feedback to that process.
We do, there's another session on November 21st. Then we're getting another group of folks who might be interested in going to go.
So we'll plan to do that.
Yep, we'll take that, we'll put that.
Yeah, that would be a specific thing to give feedback on. It really penalizes the districts that are trying to help move people forward. I think that's not according to the purpose of our program, so.
And of course, basis for all of this is program planning. Right, Ms. Lysin? We want to make sure we say it at least several times once, at least once a week.
And next we have a discussion on class rank distribution.
This is a conversation. Oh, I, oh. All right. We find that we have two things to come passing around. This year, since I apparently may not have enough, so I'll just tell this person. I gotta divide better.
Short line.
Sure, long, sure, long. Because I just think it will be even, even.
There's a couple more that second one is.
So also at your July, your July retreat, or August retreat, or at the summer retreat. In October, you'd be to have a conversation, a further conversation just about the implementation of the class rank policy that you approved in August. So here is where we are. And one of the questions that was on the table was how it impacts, how class rank is impacting or is connected to our scholarship program. So that's what we have for you tonight. All right, so what you have is on your screen, if you so choose to access it, is the Class Rank Policy 7223. You have a handout that is in contests for students, student awards and scholarships. And a piece of this has to do with scholarship distribution. And then the second handout attached to that is just a scholarship overview. We just thought it might be helpful if you haven't seen this information in a while, to take a look at what the scholarships actually are. You also have a little bit of an overview notes page, based on some of the work that was done in preparation for today. So just want to remind everyone that Policy 7223 came into being to encourage students to take the most rigorous course of study available to them during their high school years and that it is an accumulation of students' work over their entire high school career. And we know that if you are accelerated in math and science, beginning at the seventh grade level, then that certainly puts you in a different position or a better position to be part of class rank. Policy 7430, which I elected to finish typing that word, is the Policy Regarding the Distribution of Scholarships. In that policy, if you turn to that fourth page, or three of three, excuse me, there is a stipulation around awarding of scholarships and distribution of scholarships. And under distribution of scholarships, one of the things that's important to identify is that, is this statement. Unless otherwise stipulated, in the testament of the donor, scholarships shall be forwarded to the institution of higher learning, blah, 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 blah. And the paragraph above it, which is, the Board of Education shall select the recipients of the scholarships awarded by the district from a list furnished by the superintendent of schools after consultation with appropriate school staff and, if requested, the donors. Some of the scholarships that we have available to us have very clear guidelines that are written in the wills and the codicils that we have. And those are stayed based on that legal document and we will have to continue with those. A lot of those wills and codicils, particularly for the larger scholarship, talk about that it's based on where a student might be going to school, four-year in state, four-year outside, four-year in or out of state, or two-year school, or two or four-year school. So there's those kinds of conditions. But then there's also conditions placed upon the recipients on where they are in terms of their rank in class. And so that's the overlay and the connection with class rank. So that, that, it says, will be awarded to the top three, top two students. Let's pick on the Richards. I'll pick on the Richards Scholarship. That's the $3,000 scholarship that are awarded to the top two academically performing students in the senior class attending a New York State school, four-year school, New York State four-year school. So let's get all those pieces. That's in the will, that's how it's written. That's not something that we have control over to change. So those are some of the pieces that are there. So when we look at preparing students for what their life after school will be, I think one of the things we need to pay attention to is how this is connected to our scholarship distribution. Because that is a piece of, it's certainly not the only piece. The original intent is still to make sure that, that students are taking the most rigorous course of study available to them through their high school careers. So this year, what you had asked for was in October, I'll just have a little bit of an update and then a little conversation about some other options, about where this year's senior class has been in terms of those students that are at the top of the class rank in their position for their freshman, sophomore and junior years, because those, that's the data that we have. So Ms. Lysin, Mrs. Lenz and I pulled that information. We looked at that list of students. That list of students has been very stable for three years. Meaning that that cluster of students has pretty much been the same group of students. Very little variation. We also looked at their schedules for this year. There is not, when you look at their schedule, there's nothing to indicate that that pattern that we've seen would be any different when class rank is established after the end of the first semester. So that's just one thing. And we had talked about that over the summer in case you, just a little reminder, to make sure that the policy as it's being implemented with the semesterized senior classes would not impact students negatively in any way. And at this point, based on what we have for historical solid data and what we have for student schedules, we don't anticipate that it would impact it negatively at all. So then I went out and started to do a little bit of research around this issue of class rank to give you some options of what other people are doing. And I found a study, okay, I'm sorry, now for a moment, I'll get my geek on, because we all know how much I love to do this stuff and I really do. So I found a study from the National Association for College Admission Counselors in 2012. So not too old, but then my own five-year preference of looking at research. And in that research, they looked at the factors in admissions decisions for colleges. And there are some things that are interesting that have been happening. One is that, that academic performance in college prep courses, which would be our university in the high school, our AP classes, or other rigorous courses, has been consistently rated at that time as a top factor in admissions decisions. The other pieces are graded grades in all classes, standardized admission tests and students' demonstrated interest. All of those factors have increased over the past few years. What has decreased is class rank. And that's just interesting, doesn't mean anything, it's just part of a study that was done. And you can interpret data any way you want. This is how they interpret data. Other factors such as teacher and counselor recommendations, student interviews and extracurricular activities still has the same level of importance when considering admissions for students. I just thought that was interesting. I have nothing other than to say, it's just one piece of data. I also went out and pulled some work done by some other districts, not local, not local, that had, but had the amount published that some of these schools did. Just in terms of the work other districts have done with class rank. And one of the things that folks have been saying is that it is becoming less and less numbers of schools that are using class rank as rank as it is. They are using other metrics and that's what, when you flip over the page a minute, I'll show you, tell you what some of those are. So I pulled from several other different schools who had some access to some information that was needed. Not just, you know, here's a couple of things we did. These are like multi-page reports. So if you really want to have some exciting reading, I would be happy to share it with anybody who wants those things. But here's, if you flip over the page, here's what we see. Column number three, which appears to be where some schools are going, are other comparison metrics. Using the top 10% as a decile or a GPA distribution scale. Or at one school, looked at a very big holistic approach with weighting of grades and without weighting of grades. So that's just a different option than has come up in conversation before, should you choose to take a look at that. We also have some of the other options that we have discussed. One is look, using it, using, sorry, geez, six semesters using weighting. But of course, that's what we do with senior year and I think that's a really big question to ask. And then also the notion of keeping it as is, which is what we have now, or eliminating the weighting, but you would still need a replacement because there still needs to be a way to have that information accessible, particularly for scholarship distribution. So I know that's...
Why is weighting dependent on that?
It's, it's not, you just say we'd have to have another way to have people positionally ordered for a scholarship distribution. Weighting doesn't necessarily impact that. You could do that without weighting.
So if you eliminated weighting, why would you need a replacement? That's the connection on this end. Why couldn't you just do a straight average?
A straight average, you could. So based on the information that you had requested in the summer, this is our October update with a few more things added to it.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the data. That is what we asked for. In these studies, what percentage of college apps still ask for the rank in their class?
That was nuts. Well, let me see if I have it here, because I don't remember seeing that, but hold on. I don't have a number of colleges. Still do I just have it ranked by importance? So let me hold on to that question. I'm going to write it down and I will get back to you on that. Because it might be in here, I just can't readily listen, so I'm not...
Because there could be a difference between the priority used for making decisions versus it's still a data source that we're going to require.
Right, right.
And that's something that we would need to know.
I would just say on the, on applications, even for some of the scholarships that Mrs. Lenz has been working on with students, it, there was a section that asks, if you have your class ranked, there's a piece that says you can explain, my school does not rank. And then there's a part where it will ask, if you don't give like one, two, three percentage. I'm in the top 5%, I'm in the top 10%, that kind of thing. So that information can be reported in different ways, but if you, there is an option on the Common App and on most of our scholarship things, that one of the options is, does not rank. I, I don't know the percentage, but I know that those are the three options you get when you're, when you're reporting out. Percentage, rank, or my school does not rank.
And the second that I think is related, and both of these, I think, we don't want to put students at a disadvantage at the next stage of education, right? So the second that's related is what percentage of scholarships given by institutions, again, are looking for that same information? I know at my institution, I'm on the scholarship committee and it's a decision-making unit. If they're not in the top 10%, they don't get them. So I think that's another set of data that you need to make sure you're not disadvantaging our students in the next stage.
So in the top 10%, I just want to clarify, top 10% of their class. So looking at that proportionately, rather than just like a number of 10.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you're in a class of seven and you're not number one, you're not in it.
Yes, yes.
So class size is a measure and percentage of classes.
And I do, and I do think, I did note that one of the things we're going to be facing is, is class size. And what the impact of class size is on things, we have a freshman class of 60, 58 to 60 students.
Yeah, we have students that apply that are from very small schools and, you know, they're ranked fifth in the class and they're not in the top 10%.
So it's truly 50% of opening the chapter.
So I, just to make sure we're, you know, we're not...
Yep.
We're clear on what the potential future impacts are to our students in some sort of decision.
I would like to request, maybe get some links to some more detailed information about other alternatives to ranking, other schools are using. Because I'm still unclear about how it works.
Well, that works, yeah.
I'd love to see more information about that. And also specifically, in schools that have gotten away from ranking, how do they then determine which students get which scholarships?
I think we're a little bit of an anomaly, and at least from all the people I've talked to, how many scholarships we have as a...
We are very much in that, yes.
But just, you know, if there is any...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And again, one of the things that's used is either that decile or percentage or some kind of grade distribution. But I'll send you some information on that.
I would also like to request that those links, if we can identify them, be also put on the public files, so which...
Yeah, oh yeah, there's no reason why not.
The other thing that I've seen, just like we have with our scholarships, the next step of educational institutions also have restrictions on their scholarships. So the grantees of those scholarships put certain constraints that then, in the college world, those students have to, we have to comply with them as well, right? They're, they're from this county.
Yes.
From this town, you know? So there's a lot of data manipulation that goes into it at the next level as well.
So it's a, it's a little bit of, it's a, the addition, the aha discovery about just thinking about that connection with our own scholarships and with students and college admission takes, like class rank policy and adds another dimension to it, to really round it out and to think beyond, beyond just the numbers in January. But what do they need for students in terms of scholarship and then in terms of college admissions and some other things?
I think that's a good holistic view.
So what I will do is I will post up the information that I have on the public site with the links. Or there'll be PDFs, like we do everything else, because lots of other stuff is up there as well and then folks can just access it right there. And everyone can have fun with research like me. So...
Thank you for the work.
What we, I would suggest that we do is revisit this again, perhaps in January a little bit, just to see how things work and how, where we are. And we did have an idea last year, before the scholarship committee changed, doing scholarships last year, that it might be worthwhile for our larger scholarship awards to really pull those wills and really take a look at what they say, so that we have... those wills and really take a look at what they say, so that we have a firmer, like right there, here's what it says in the will and the codicil about how these scholarships are supposed to work. I also know that the counseling office is looking to provide more information too, to families, about the scholarships and about how our scholarships work, because one of the things we learned last year was that that was not information that was readily accessible to families, or that families felt they could readily access. So we're changing that process as well. So that's a real, that's a really good thing.
A great thing.
Yes, it is a great thing.
I know some people that have complained because they didn't understand why they're, not here luckily, but in other districts where they gave away money, and you know, number one student got none of those scholarships, and wrote nasty grams, and all kinds of stuff.
Well, you have the scholarship overview, and that's part of what we will use along with some other things. So for your own information, you have some of this as well, so. Okay, I heard somebody say, today, knowledge is power. I'm not sure where I was when I heard that, but there it was in middle school, right, Mark or Jacob? Mr. Raj, knowledge is power.
Yes.
Thank you for all of that.
You have some more knowledge tonight.
So, because-
Because when you read, when you do that, you can learn new vocabulary words. Thank you, we'll come back in a minute. And next we have the vision and coalition update.
Sure, I'm kind of right in the middle, so maybe I'll move, so I can see, I've missed, so I'll stand up from here.
Sure.
So the vision, coal, coalition, and we've met, what did you guys, we've met like five times so far since September started, and you've had updates in your email about where we are in the process. We're right, if you look at this original picture that we made, oh gosh, maybe late spring.
In May.
Yeah, late spring. We're up here, we're still getting data, and that's the part that we're working on now. We have three questions. For paper online, what skills and qualities do candidate Harry students need in order to be prepared for the adult world? What is our district doing well to ensure students are well-prepared for the future? Right? Because we don't want, we've agreed, we don't want to throw away things that are already working for us. And three is what changes would you like to see made in improvement? So we have these surveys, and we're getting all the information now from as many people as we can, paper, online, all over the community, businesses, and so on. And that part will go through till mid-December, Christmas time, when, you know, before break. And then, getting back, bringing it to the board, giving the information in a public hearing, and seeing what, what do we do next, making the vision part. So we're still way up the top there and getting all the information, but it's the fun part, you know, trying to talk to people individually and find out, you know, what do you think, and spreading the word that way. What questions do you have?
Well, we forgot, quite frankly, what did we forget? I forgot we had done this roadmap in May.
Yes.
Scott, before you joined the board? And we do want to revise it a little bit, based on-
Do things?
Yep.
Right. We didn't do this yet, we still might, if not thrown away or anything, maybe it's coming later? Gone, just not there yet. So instead of having a base flashy, you know, trying to reach people in one event, it's been more of a personal approach, reaching out at businesses and events and, you know, just talking to a lot of people.
And our best ambassador so far is Mark Davidson, who has made this, we can. What's the new logo look like?
It's cool.
Do we have, do we have it yet?
I don't have it.
I always send it up to, I mean, I splash it up, though. I know, I think I just have my- You get some light?
Keep your germs right there.
Yeah, you can. Turn your screen around.
I could describe it, but it looks really cool.
But if you could, can you bring it up on your monitor? I, I will, yeah. And our, our logo is done by a student, and our feedback from our coalition members so far has really been very positive, so it's a go.
So it has the earth, because it's global, and it's an eye because of the vision, and graduation cap because of the logo.
Nice. So that will now be the brand.
I know that icon.
You do?
I see that icon.
All the dirty work. Yep. And so, and Marielle is also on the coalition as well, and is going to be helping us with, with doing a little bit of writing and some other things. So the, the piece that's unique about how this group chose to do its work is to really make it a personal connection, to go out and talk to people and give people information about the survey, and listen to them. And I think that that's, and then please fill out the survey, that the conversation has been about, we have the survey, this is what we're doing, please complete it, but it's been about making that personal connection with people to do that work. And that's a little bit different than how a lot of surveys are distributed. We did post it on the website this week, so it's out there. We are also out talking, as Rachel said, to different groups and businesses as well.
And I think you have that in one of the, like, the calendar of which meeting, and, you know, we're trying to reach as many community members as we can, just to get as much feedback as we can, so we have a, thank you. And the next meeting is Monday the 28th. So, in the beginning, we were meeting every two weeks, now we spread it out a little bit because we're just, you know, getting information, so. I'll update you again next time. Yeah, Marielle-
I'm just a committee member, can I, we, to address that question about, we absolutely are reaching out to alumni, and-
Oh, yes, yes.
And how we're doing about-
Yep, ours too, yep.
You.
Yep, we're gonna be sending emails out to our students that have graduated the past couple of years to see if we can get in for, because we have their email addresses, so we can do that, yep. That's what we're doing there. And then let's all remember that over the holidays, we have the two-night basketball tournament, and we're gonna be setting up some tables at some of those events as well. So that will be a way to capture other individuals. We've also changed the survey a little bit to add a question about who people are, their group.
Yeah, who do you, how do you identify?
How do you identify? So we can disaggregate the data by students, parents, community members, alumni.
Mark? I was gonna say, I know you had a question about announcing it during halftime.
Yes, yes.
Yep, that's on our list.
Yes, on our list, yeah. Yep. Yep, can I give it to Jen? Is it a t-shirt, Hannah?
Well, so if you want to do that at games, you, it's an online link right now, but do we have paper copies?
We have paper copies.
You can have people fill it out, give it back to me in the next 10 minutes?
Yep, you know what we should do during games? Send a blast via email, so people have it, and also they'll get it on their phone, and then it's, uh- We can do that. Can you figure, can you find out if we can do that? How about you guys figure that out?
You should be able to sum it up through Blackboard.
Yeah, that should be pretty easy, too. That's a great idea. So why don't you, you guys figure that out, if that happens. We are also gonna have some parent-teacher conferences are coming up at the elementary school, and so we're, Kathy Dop has been down there working with folks, so we're going to give each teacher a, a set of paper copies, so while they're waiting perhaps for their conference with their teacher, they could fill out a paper copy right there.
Excellent.
So just trying to get the data.
Yeah, yeah.
Where and what time was the meeting on the 20th?
Monday the 28th.
Six o'clock in our conference room.
I'm still unclear where the board, dream team responsibilities was from a perspective of what our duties are.
Well, the board's responsibility is to set the vision for the district. That's, that's your responsibility. Our goal, our work is really just to be your boots-on-the-ground, collecting the information.
So when you get to the design work, then the board's engaged in that?
Because that's the board's responsibility.
I agree. Not having owners on the, this is great, I see the components, right?
Yes, I know, it was, and we forgot.
But I'm still trying to figure out, okay, so who are we assigning these to?
Yes. So the, the vision coalition, the guiding group, has really been about gathering the information for the board. So it's the boots-on-the-ground work, the board will have all the information, then, we had also talked about, to, to work with it for a future vision, we'd also talked about in the coalition, perhaps having a findings night, like having everybody come, here's the information we collected, here's the findings from what we found, and then, Mrs. Schwaber and I were just talking this week, to go along with that, we really need to put together a data set of who the, who we are as a district. What are our students look like? What is their performance right now? So we have that other piece to say, oh, here's some other information, and then here's all of our aspirational and futuristic information, so that the whole big picture can come together with the beautiful world in the eye graduation cap.
Could we possibly tie in the current picture of who we are as a district, maybe educating on the test result components?
That's part of the data set.
We talked about that.
Yes, yep. Because I think what would be helpful for everyone is just, what does that picture look like in a concise, usable format? Because some of the stuff we get, some of the stuff, reports we get are very not user-friendly. So that's, Jen and I just talked about that this week, that we were going to work on that. That would be valuable for a whole bunch of different reasons.
Maybe participation will help?
Yep, well, perhaps. So we're gonna also clean up, so Scott, I really have to thank you, because you're one responsible email to say, where's the roadmap? And gendered in my mind that there actually was one.
Yes.
So that was very helpful, but we're gonna go back and fix it and clean it up a little bit, now that we're actually doing.
Okay, keep us updated.
And the other thing is, in the last information I sent out, for the coalition and for the board, you have a link to the live real-time Excel spreadsheet of data collection. So that's real-time, so if you went back and checked it every couple of days, hopefully you would see an increase in numbers and an increase in responses.
Okay. Actually, we have committee meetings and some potential dates for.
So, to help us, to help you get organized with some of your board committees, for everybody, and this is out in the public sector, I thought it'd be nice for everybody to see what board committees you have, and that is per a board policy, and also to see who is on them for this year, that you all make that decision annually, and what those committees do. Down below, again, I thought it might be helpful to see what the committees are, and when the times of the year might be that meeting would be more important, that meetings happen perhaps more regularly. So soon, we'll be getting ready to start our advocacy efforts for the year around fair funding. We will have some things with transportation coming up, because that's happening. We have finance coming up in relation to the 17, 18 school budget, yes, we're thinking about that already. We have buildings and grounds, we'll be working on some things around not only solar, but the architect RFP, that's, that's going out, to start to think about some, some repairs and things we need to do in the district. And then we have policy, and policy, we need to, we need to kind of start working on that a little bit. That meeting, that committee usually meets through May, and then we have some that are more in the spring, which are the scholarship and the superintendent evaluation. So we're offering you all this information tonight as a reminder, as a sharing, that we need to start scheduling some of these meetings.
I believe that from the training that I went to, that we have to specifically address audit in one of our committees. Could we like double-check that with our attorney or NISA or something? Maybe we need, that might be a policy issue, we might have to alter how we describe the finance committee or something.
Right.
It was made to appear in the training that that is a state requirement.
The audit committee?
The audit committee. Yes. And I know we, the finance committee, Carol and I, functioned that way, but I don't know if that's suffice it, or if we need to have some more formality to it.
Okay, well, let me check on that.
I wanted that one to have a potential third party that's some-
Yes, we, we-
Who did that for a while, and, you know, the person that was doing it was, you know, kind of volunteering, and was now not really available to continue in their role.
That was another thing they told us, is we were required to have three months.
And, and so we had sent, last week I sent some suggestions.
I, on those suggestions, I, I, I don't know any of their backgrounds to make any judgment. The, the thing that was stressed to us is who we bring as an outsider on the audit committee should be knowledgeable in the world of accounting and finance.
Yes, and all of those suggestions came from Mrs. Schiefer, so. Yes, and we have done, we have done that as that, so.
Folks in the community, we know that's what they need.
Yeah.
And then, Scott, the other piece that was mentioned was about the open meetings law piece, of which we have been inconsistent with. So we have, Patty and I sat down and thought about how we could do that in a way that was more consistent, because for, so for all of these meetings, which is why we need to establish some dates, we can use the public section, excuse me, of Board Docs to post the information, and then we can just post them on our website. How would you like to proceed? Would you like, Patty, would you like folks to let, how would we like to do this, to make sure we get some dates from board meetings?
Well, some of them are, will be specific to what's going on. One of them, policy, if we can start scheduling that on a regular basis.
That's a good idea.
I was thinking maybe since Thursday night is specific to board meeting, or whatever, if maybe we can meet an hour before, and the second meeting, to get, at least get started on a regular, if we're, if they're there on a regular basis, so everybody knows this night is-
So that'll be a little tough, I mean, I teach till five. I mean, if we did 6:15 or 6:30, I could probably say I could be here every time.
It might, that might be a possibility. I've, I've been at a training the last couple of days, and there was some suggestions and policy, if we post a lot of stuff on Board Docs, and there, I'm learning that we can do that, that, so if some of that, like, the homework is done, so we could come in and meet early before the meeting, but if review that on your own through Board Docs, that might be possible.
So the discussion time would be shorter.
Right.
Right, right.
Related to what you learned at your training, is, is there a possibility for us to possibly put like the policy manual?
Yes, and that's, yes, that's gonna be my next project, because we can, learning how to do that, we might have to.
I'm very excited about that.
Yes, yes.
So I would be wanting-
Going with the York and eggs, and then, but then, but then, yes, but then it's accessible to everybody, and lots of districts have done that. It's a resource capacity issue.
The other thing that it helps is document control, because like, we, we change a policy, but when does it get to our policy manual, so that we all are looking at the right one?
Right, and then some people don't, like, I used to send out copies, and then I would get books back, and it's like, I didn't put these in, so this, this will be-
Exactly.
And then I put together, put it, I still haven't gotten it back.
It's really a lot, like, we're quite digital.
Yes, and then-
Exactly, it's just been a kind of a pain to, yeah.
It's a lot to, but then also, I think there's a way that it will track some changes too, so. too, so.
Carol, does that work for you, if we did that?
I like that idea, we can certainly give that a whirl, let's try it a couple of times, too.
And then you said the second meeting of the.
Probably the second meeting with informational, because sometimes a business meeting is, so if we try the second meeting.
Yeah.
Before that, at least try, start that, and then, so I don't.
And we have a very, last year's policy committee, maybe decision is just start marching through the policy manual, we are up to the community.
Three thousand.
Yeah, three thousand.
Not unless something came on.
Right, not unless there was like a new policy that you had to have, or something we had to revise, we were really just going to work our way through the manual in a systematic fashion, we, we found that to be less confusing as the work was being done.
I've been reading. So you want to say six thirty?
So wait until the second meeting, though, and we don't do that again until January.
Right, so maybe we could pick another, let's see.
Because November, today doesn't count, even though it's November, today's our second meeting, we only have one in November and one in December.
Right.
So we can pick another day in there if you potentially wanted to, or, we could wait till January, but I hate to push it back so long.
Well, if we, if we do one on the seventeenth, before the business meeting, just to do the, like a framework of what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Can we do that?
Yeah, because that's really the one that needs to get started.
All right, and maybe I'll know some more about, yeah, fine, okay, fine.
And the other one that would be.
Seventeenth, right?
Yes, like at six fifteen, is that okay?
I'm getting to my personal calendar now.
And while that's going on, then the other one that will be coming up will be trans, transportation, which is Scott and Cheryl. I think you're the winner tonight. And that's because we'll be looking at the vehicle replacement schedule, and. So we can, we'll, we'll reach out to you guys on that one. That'll be in December, what?
Is that gonna be a one-time thing for decision to bring something to the board, or is that a sequence of meetings?
It's one to two. It really has to do with the bus lease replacement schedule and the vehicle replacement schedule, and what the transportation, projected transportation needs are. Mr. Walker's already working on it.
He said six fifteen, right?
Is that okay?
Yes, it is.
As close to that as you can safely get here.
Ten minutes. See you this weekend.
In December, in December. Then we'll reach out for you.
Because some, the board members, before, members are old program that we had, before we went to board docs, a lot of the documents were, we could post up there, so that, we'll be progressing more to that, so things will be there all in one set.
We're looking, we're looking to, Patty was so excited about some of her learning, we're looking to create, really use board docs as a one-stop shop for everything, everything, and I think that would be helpful, there's so much information.
And even board notes can go there, we all have to get separate meetings.
So we really just wanted to bring this to your attention again, and just as a reminder that we, we will do have some new structures in place for OML, and for when that, for those times when it's appropriate to do that, de-post, and then de-post minutes, we've done it, we've just been inconsistent. We're doing pretty well under the old system.
Yeah, the old, then we went to this, so.
Kind of less our needs are a little bit.
Okay.
We have policy meetings set, so thank you, that was a big. Okay. Next, we will have our report from our student representative.
All right, so.
Will you be providing us something in writing tomorrow, yes?
Writing, what do you mean?
Like a report in writing to add to this?
Oh, I definitely could, if you, you need that.
That would be, would you be so kind to do?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Well, so, Dr. Brody asked, asked me the question about, God did studies, I'm in the middle of the day, last week, so you get, at the end of the semester, I misheard that, and I got it now, I didn't get all the students, but I got about a hundred and fifty-four, I'm not gonna go into like the whole, got some of it, I can, I can do that at the end of the semester, if you want me to do the survey again, which I could, but many people prefer it at the end of the day, a lot of the concerns were clubs, mainly for both these students, like they can, they can run a club, but they would have to miss a lot of the club meetings, let's see, lots of people felt like that, they didn't have all their homework in the middle of the day, which they would like, that, like at the end of the day, they would have all their homework to work on, instead of, once they get done with their homework in the middle of the day, they just have to sit around, and as to where, if they get all their homework throughout the day, and they get it at ten o'clock, or whenever clock, they could just work on it then. So yeah, I'm not getting one of the guts of it, I could probably do that at the end of semester, some other stuff that were, that was brought up to me was transcripts about the dropped classes, they, some kids wanna know if they include W's, like withdrawal, withdrawals, I think that's a more personal thing, so I.
Did you refer them to counseling section?
I, I said they should.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So CSI kids actually, came up to me and said CSI should have their own class block, that's one of their opinions.
They went one step forward.
And as we had a classroom discussion today, at the board meeting, I had some, I had a classroom discussion with some of my students, friends, whatever you want, but people feel like this new policy isn't, like with all the classes and such, some people think it's not fair, they need to equalize. Yeah, many people just don't like, understand why some of the classes aren't counting, some of them are, I could, I didn't know the answer to that, so I couldn't really get them the answer, and I related that back to you, so.
Right, and did you, okay, are they gonna, did you refer them to Miss Lee Sin or me or?
Well, I, I told them that I, I didn't know the answer.
Okay, so you and I need to have, we all need to have a little conversation.
Probably, yeah, that's probably the best thing.
That's right, we got that.
Some people are, yeah, some people are wondering why, like they can't see the class list, like I haven't really looked into it, so I don't know, like I haven't, haven't been able to find it, so, yes, they're just wondering why that's not available, available to the public, and I think that's it. So, and also, while I was doing the survey for Dr. Brody, I came across the fact that many people want their voices heard, like, once people started hearing that I was doing it, they started coming to me and talking to me about it, so that I feel like that really solidifies the fact that, like it's student representative is very, very needed, and it's a necessity for people to get their voices heard.
So one of the things we had a little impromptu meeting last week, because as we're, as we have a student representative, we've gotta make sure we're building the right communication pipeline structures, so that information gets to where it needs to go for students to get answers, so that was a really great thing, so we're, we're gonna continue to work together on getting information to Lucas, so he can share that, or having him have who the go-to people are, so that the students can get their questions answered. But I think one of the things that's great is that you're, you're, you're not one of those scary adults, you're a peer.
Yeah.
And there's, there's something about that for kids that I think is really comforting, and so what, what we talked about was, because Lucas is our inaugural student representative, is how we really empower and equip him with the information that he needs in order to go out and talk to the students. So I anticipate the, the nice chairs in my office will be used frequently.
Yeah.
So we just need to get you on my calendar, so I can answer some of those questions, right, because we have information to share.
All right.
Okay, Miss Lee Sin and I, all right?
Any other questions for you?
And please write some of that up first, so we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Just no further questions, but anything that would be helpful to us, in terms of feedback, as when students express concerns or misgivings or whatever, if you try to ask them a little more specific.
Yeah.
Others would say, it's unfair, or what, what do you mean, what is unfair, what exactly do you think is unfair?
I, I think.
You know, or just, you know, if we have concrete, you know, concerns, then we can begin to consider them interesting.
I, I think I, I get what you're saying, I think it's, they think it's unfair because of like, that, just the fact that some classes count, other classes don't, I, I feel like that's what most people are saying about that.
So the fact that we semesterized many if not most of the senior schedule did not address their concerns about that.
Or do they know? Some other possibility?
Well, I mean, that's.
I, I don't think, I don't think most of them did, I don't know if a lot of them knew which ones were semesterized, some, like, with the, with the ones and the twos, that, like behind their classes, those are, those were, yeah.
It shows up on their schedule.
Yeah.
It shows up on their schedule.
Exsterized, but like.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm dealing with, if they really don't know, you know, then I think that we need to maybe try to improve our communication, rather than expecting now, look at their schedules, say, oh, I see, it's now semesterized, maybe, you know, the, to, to, you know, they didn't put.
We did explain that, yeah, it was explained, but I think, I think one of the things that I think is important, just in a lot of different arenas, I don't know about any of you, but there is so much information coming at us all the time, that I think that we need to have multiple communication structures in place, because sometimes you just don't get it the first time, like even to receive it, because there's so many things, and I, I think this is new for our students, it's new for them to be directly receiving information in a different way, and I just think we need to beef that up a little bit, so I think it's not a matter of whether or not it is or it isn't happening, is it happening in enough ways for the message to get out there?
So there's concern, obviously, it's not, if there's.
Right, because there's at least a few students who have some more questions we wanna get, and I think one of them is you empower, we empower our student representative with some answers, but we also empower Lucas to have other people who could answer questions as well.
And I did go, like, when I was surveying, I did go to like different guy's studies, asked them the question, and then I kinda introduced myself as to who I am and my position, and if they ever need anything I wanna bring up or anything to you guys, I, I told them to come to me.
I would also suggest you encourage them to come to you.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Actually, some of us students today told me that they didn't know they could come to meetings, so.
Well, then there you go.
Well, now, that's your next tough charge.
I was just thinking too, I know having a student representative is new for us too, and we want you to be able to do your job, so if you're speaking for everybody, but if you think there's something that we can do to help you, just feel free to let me know.
All right, thank you.
Or present, sure, because I see this as a really great addition to the public.
Do you want that, like, what, what I talked about yesterday, do you want that, like, emailed?
Yes, email, and, and you can use a bulleted fashion.
Did you get the, the?
Yeah, I did, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You should just, just like that, and fill in your own stuff.
I'm sorry, I just did, I just.
But it should just, when you pop it in, do your bullets, and just like that, but and that's perfect.
So you just bulleted fashion would be fine.
Okay.
So thank you, and come, step down and get on my calendar, we'll do a follow-up presentation. I know you stopped in one day and I was at, I was not available.
Right.
Not sure where I was, but I wasn't in my office, but thank you. Public comment time.
No, I know, I just was wondering, there is a question at the end, though, right? You said the very beginning, that I could ask a question at the very end, when is that, after German or before?
Board member after the meeting.
After a German, okay. Okay.
Next, we have our new straight-up bullets.
I spoke, my third bullet point was about our library, our co-teach library program, and we're seeing a lot of neat, creative projects, and Audrey, we're playing to Abby's strengths, both the work she does with teachers and the students, we're doing a lot K-12, we're trying to do more K, we have our East Hill family, but we're also looking, what is our K-12 family, Michelle Eggleston's graphic design class made coloring books for our first and seventh graders, our kindergarten and first graders on fire safety, and also we were able to go decked out in our costumes, first, second, and third, did a parade, and then we had Big Trevor, who bonded with our Little Trevor, and it was fantastic, high schoolers where our tour guides were on parade, just give us a.
I don't know, I did.
I'm pretty sure he did, because Craig was there, and I know he definitely did of them singing.
I have a little library footage, too. It gave us something to do, an audience to show up our costumes, we came during the eleven, twelve block, so we didn't interrupt construction, it was near our lunch recess, so we didn't have to show up too much of our own day, and then the fourth and fifth graders actually came over on bus in their costumes, which is unusual, normally fourth, fifth don't wear costumes, but the chorus came to sing, and where our chorus actually is at two fifteen now, instead of recess, it's seventy-five numbers strong, and they sang three different selections, and we had some nice parents show up, too, it was great. And finally, just a brief update about conscious discipline, the beginning of October, we had our three days of teacher training with our certified trainer, Michelle started our conscious discipline action team, which was any teacher who is, who wanted to be on the team, to really try out, be the pioneer in trying things out, assessing, and as a trainer, turn to be trainer for their grade levels, Michelle also took pictures of the families at back-to-school night, and then any child, we didn't get their picture taken of the family, she went around to get the children with a teacher, and we have those posted all along the building and the stairwells, and the kids love it, I've got one little boy who just is absolutely certain he can't find his picture, he can only find his neighbors and his cousins, so they're all there, we've also, you might have seen, we did one page, full page out in the Penny Saver, and we're gonna, we're working on our November, just to get up to the community to tell them what conscious discipline is, and she's also started a weekly training for our recess aides, parents spoke about that a little earlier, it's an area where we have great women who do the job, and it's some support in the language, so it's the same thing continually throughout the day, so that's an area that we thought we needed to shine some attention on.
Are how many pictures on the Facebook page? Mr. Ross, you're up.
Okay, at the end of October, our eighth grade students went up to the Fort Montgomery Community College campus and did a career fair that was run through each of our offices, there was a variety of different fields of employers that were there, that were talking about what they did and how they got there, and trying to start giving our students a taste of, you know, what's out there, and what they need to do to be able to get there, and those sorts of things. Some PBL stuff that was going on, one thing in the middle of the month was we brought in a speaker, she was a nurse that was in Africa, and this corresponded with stuff going on in some grade PLA, they were studying a book, A Long Walk to Water, and the nurse was able to bring in some tangible stuff of what was going on in the book, but that she actually saw during her time in Africa, they are in the process of finishing up that project, and the seventh graders are also just presented on a solar water purification device that they developed, so that was about a week ago, the eighth grade science students just did their erosion project, and the sixth grade finished up their study of how geography affects development of civilizations, which was taking a look at the Erie Canal and the Mohawk Valley, and comparing those aspects to ancient civilizations. We also, last week, just rolled out our results first initiative to try to help decrease our failure rate, recalling a project success, so far we're seeing some initial positive results, and we're gonna continue tweaking it based on feedback that we're getting from teachers and students, and how we can be able to make it as effective as possible. Um, and we're going to continue tweaking it based on feedback that we're getting from teachers and students and how we can be able to make it as effective as possible.
Sure. Two things. One is I would love to see the results on, on the ten-week report. You know, if you could see that, to see how.
Yeah, we were just, we had a results first meeting today, and we were talking about what we're going to be using as our measures of success. Um, we had some discussions about, um, comparing it to the five-week reports and how we have talked in the past about how, um, five-week reports maybe are not taken as seriously by students as they are by our teachers. Um, but we were talking about how just having this weekly, um, update from teachers of who's passing and who's failing and who needs to be doing what. And to be able to be more successful is heightening the awareness of our teachers, which is starting to, um, heighten the awareness of our students. Cause they're going in and asking the questions of, what do I owe? What is my grade? You know, they want the immediate feedback and don't necessarily realize the amount of work it takes to be able to go through back work as well as the current assignments. But, um, we're trying to get that information as best as possible.
And the other thing is I did some research on millet, which is what is used to present it to the students as an example of dish. And I was reading that millet either can be used as a flour or to make alcoholic beverages. And which one was it?
Uh, they did the flour.
Has there been any repercussions of singling the students' health?
No. Uh, we're trying to keep it as positive as possible, and that's one of the reasons why we decided to go with the title of Project Success. And, and we're really trying to, it, it's an accountability thing of where if people are not doing what they're supposed to be doing outside of school, that we're creating that time to be able to have it happen. So the choice is purely on the students. Um, and it's been a mixture of students, so it's not like it's the same students every day and for the same classes and so on and so forth.
Thank you.
It's a mess.
You can't see. I need a tissue.
I, I, I have tissues.
You probably sound, you don't care.
Okay, anyhow, let's talk about something better. Um, so finally, General McFarland was able to come home and receive his Hall of Fame induction plaque. Um, and we were lucky that it worked out. Obviously, we have great access to Tracy, so she was able to help us arrange it. He was home for a very short time. Um, and it worked out. Well, we came to the high school, we presented him with his plaque. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to see, but, um, we hung the new sign about the Hall of Fame. His plaque is the first. Um, we posted a, an updated application on the website. Um, because now, as we talked about last year, uh, we will seek nominations from the community for people that they think, can'tary graduates, that they think will be, uh, good representatives and, and have done amazing things since they've left us. Um, and therefore go into the Hall of Fame. And we talked about, then that person will be our guest speaker at graduation. Um, the nice thing was, is that we, uh, we had a lot going on that day too. The, the students were getting pictures done for the yearbook. The seniors were getting their senior picture done in the gym. So I was able to sort of go in and tell them quickly about how this happened last year and what it was. And if they weren't at graduation, this is what's gonna happen from now on. So we invited them, as well as some other classes that had come down to, to listen to him speak. And, um, so they'd get a sense too of what it's about. And since their graduation, um, the guest speaker will be our next, our next inductee. And he was great. He, he made some comments in general to the students, but then he stayed around. He came in full uniform, so the kids could see him all generalled out. What's the military equivalent? I don't know, but, um, but he was amazing. He talked to some of our kids who are really excited about entering the military and was very inspiring for them. They were very excited. So it was great. And I'm excited about, um, you know, this just kid, we decided to do this last year. He was our, um, inaugural inductee because, you know, Time Magazine's top one hundred. So, uh, it'll be interesting to see what we get in terms of the applications. And we'll put together a committee which will involve our class officers and our class advisors, um, a board member hopefully, and, and myself. And we'll, we'll talk about the nominations that come in, and then we'll select one and share that out and, and have them come and speak to our students at graduation. So it's gonna be exciting. Um, Mrs. Ward already talked about our fun and exciting Halloween adventures. I think it's great because I think in the first quarter, we've had the little people up to the high school more, you know, than we did last year. So it, it's been nice. They're helping us with food with Fallon. I think it was great too when they came for trick or treating, cause they could see our, our wall of goodies that's growing, um, for all of our donations. And I do know that some people have been asking where the donations, um, and shoot, I should have brought exactly what you told me. But Mr. Horander talked about dry goods and stuff are gonna go to the church, the comfort zone, um, right here in, in Canjo, so that some of those things can go out. Um, he talked about a specific, um, food pantry in Glover'sville that serves a lot of people and has a lot of need. Um, we also talked about using some of the food to set up care packages for some of our own families that could be given out from our family room. Um, and there was a little more. Um, in Palatine Bridge, they help families who, who, um, people who can't get out. So it's mostly older families who need food. I can't remember what he said it's called. But that's where we're looking right now in terms of dividing some of our donations. So we encourage people to keep, keep going. We have all the way up through Thanksgiving. The day before the long Thanksgiving weekend will fill the bus and we'll see if Jimmy gets off.
And, and, uh, the General McFarland speech was, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, no.
What I was gonna say, is on Facebook and has reached two thousand seven hundred and seventy-two people. Like, it's a big, that's a big one, so.
Well, and that's one of the reasons we can't, we can't acknowledge it beforehand. As Mrs. White told me last year, I was causing a security threat. And so we're not allowed to put out into the universe before he comes that he's coming, because he's such a big deal. So it's all. It's all sort of always last minute, and we took the opportunity when we had access, but that's why it was sort of not a whole, you know, it was very just, he's coming, he's gonna be here. This is when she said he could come visit. It may have happened. And maybe, um, our next inductee will not require such measures of national security. And we can be a little more proactive in how we, we put those things out to the universe.
Are we comfortable with the, um, the senior lounge at this point? I know previous meetings, we had discussions of concerns and stuff.
Yes. I met with the kids. We had some, um, engaging conversation. They were really very good, because they said, this is what we'll make sure, does and doesn't happen. Um, and then they wrote up a contract. Uh, we had some, speaking of Google and all that stuff, John kept, John O'Connor sent it to me. And he kept sending to me in Google, and I kept accepting, and it kept going back to ask for requests. And so we're on this cycle. I finally said, please, just attach it. So that's ready. Um, we have the list based on the criteria we talked about, which was academically, you're doing okay. You don't have a ton of absences. Um, and you don't have major disciplinary infractions. Um, that list has been compiled. The cards were taken over. Last year, we did our little Hoover cards. Those were taken over to, um, East Hill and laminated. They were cut up. Uh, now they have labels on them with the students' names. So hopefully tomorrow, the students will get the contracts so that they can read them, sign them, and then when they return the contract, they'll get their card. The teachers will receive a list of all the students who currently will have access. Um, and then the kids are arranging a sign-in and a sign-out. And, um, they said that they would monitor and clean it up at the end of the day, make sure anything that's brought in gets taken out. Uh, they'll ask before they hang anything up. Some of them talked about bringing in things like board games and different stuff like that, so we're in good shape, I think. And then we'll just, you know, hopefully, um, I think the people who met with me and the kids who we talked with have the best intentions. Um, and they said if they see something, they're gonna say something. But if it is the biggest thing, you don't let it spiral. So, so I'm hopeful. I think that they'll, they'll be able to enjoy it and.
Did we address how cards get linked?
Yes. It's in the contract that they wrote up. I, I, I should write, like, the first one is, um, when it talks about the food, like, I will not bring food into the senior lounge, no matter, matter how hungry I might be. So, um, and then it talks about, you have to keep your grades up, you have to keep out of trouble, you have to make sure your attendance is good. And it says, the, the very last line it gives them is that anytime if these things aren't being met, you can lose your privileges.
And there's new furniture, which has not been used yet. The furniture came over this summer.
So it'll be really nice.
So it's really nice. It's a really nice space. Up at the top of the stairs by the auditorium. And, uh, uh, right outside the social studies.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. I just didn't want to talk to you, cause I don't sound crazy.
I know.
Really, yeah, it's like. Wow.
Yeah, we just don't want to turn.
I know, I'm surprised Stacy's still sitting. She did point out that the two of us felt like garbage, and she couldn't stay like fine, so.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it was a server, so. I'll be, I'll be quick so that we can not be around this. Um, so our first thing, we'd like to officially welcome Lindsay Hodge to the district. Um, she's coming to us via the Family Counseling Center. She has been contracted to be our Student Care Such Crisis Counselor, and we approved, um, previously. Um, we put her right to work when she got here, um, boots to the ground, and it's been, she's been a great asset to the team. We're developing, um, some protocols around how she's utilized, kind of educating ourselves and, um, school staff as to what a crisis is, what it looks like. Um, we all have, we have noted that all of us have different versions of what a crisis is. Um, and so we had to develop a universal definition of a crisis, so that, um, it was very clear that, you know, spilled milk, she wasn't being called for, so. Um, but we're working that out. Um, like I said, though, she's been, uh, been a great asset to our, to our team. And she comes in with a lot of expertise when it comes to, um, crisis resolution, conflict resolution, um, uh, helping families get hooked up with, um, asset services. Doing very quick, immediate, and then relating to our PPS team as a whole as to what our next event is. Um, she's been a great addition. Um, the next thing is, uh, community education site is up and running. We have two, um, two great opportunities this month. Um, one is, you heard earlier, is the CSI group is, will be going down to Arkell Senior Center. We discussed earlier this summer that we wanted to really make sure that the community ed program was involving, well, many areas. And, um, when I called around, the Arkell Senior Center was the one that was like, yes, we want this. And so we pitched some ideas and, uh, we talked about the technology aspect for them and what the senior, they pulled the seniors down there and they came back with, uh, you know, we just have devices that we don't know what to do with. Or we have questions about, like, literally, how do I, how do I FaceTime my grandson? Or how do I take pictures and send them? How do I delete emails? That type of stuff. And I'm like, well, I have a whole crew of people that can show you how to do that. So it's really gonna be, are you gonna be, you have to sign up on the web, that you, uh, come to sign up, just fill out my little waiver thing, okay?
I thought we were invited to see, come down and check it out by the librarians.
You are, just fill out the waiver thing, so I know you're coming. But it's just a form. Um, it's all on the site. And you hit on the link and it will take you to a Google form. You just fill out the form, and just so I know who's coming. It's really for large ones, our next event will be at the end of November, and it's, um, it is a holiday crafting. I did get, um, several people that are gonna be able to do crafts with, it's open to anyone. Um, thankfully, it's not me, because I'm not very crafty. So other people who are will be, um, doing a variety of projects, um, with anyone who'd like to come and join, that they could give us gifts or, um, or choose a decoration. And, um, last but not least, our special ed department, just to update you of what we've been doing as a team. We've been reviewing New York State's blueprint for improved results for students with disabilities and kind of like outlined seven key principles that they have highlighted as being crucial to student success. And the first one, um, has been near and dear to our hearts, um, as a special ed department, and that is improving students' self-adulthood. So we really took, um, uh, our last team meeting as a way of looking at how can we encourage that even from our littlest folk all the way up to our seniors. So our, we're really great at the high school level, saying, giving students more ownership, but how do we push that back and keep pushing it back? And, uh, and they honestly came up with some great, um, great ideas for the little guys. Uh, one teacher is having, um, students chart it, like color it in what they're doing progress-wise, so that they can monitor their progress. And then at the end, if they've achieved a goal, it says, ask them what your goal is, cause I know what it is and I can show you how they can do it. So, like, yeah, so I mean, cool idea is that we're showing and, and having the students take ownership, so we're gonna continue to, to visit that philosophy.
I just, I love that idea, and I'd like to suggest or encourage that not just be a special education project, but that it be expanded to total education.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna totally steal this from Stacy. Um, but the fifth grade team was talking to, they brought up, when we were having this discussion, um, with a fifth grade special ed teacher, that they're having the, um, their students run the parent teacher meetings. And we're like, you know, how can we encourage that in the CSU? So there, so, yeah, I think it's becoming, and especially when our co-teach classrooms, how we had these ideas in the special ed world and how it's being transferred to, to all students. So, yeah, I agree. Can, can I ask Mark to jump in, because he, you've got some folks that are doing that.
Yes, um.
And just explain a little.
One of the, um, this is, one of the purposes of the, um, results first that we've been doing during our advisory groups has been goal setting at each of our different grade levels. So our seventh grade team is doing both, uh, long and short-term goals on a weekly basis. And every Monday, they come back and revisit, and revise, and adjust their goals. The, um, sixth grade team is using a form that they're calling, how am I doing? And they start just about every class with it of, am I bringing my materials with me? Do I have my homework done? Um, you know, did I, you know, put my homework for A and B? Do I have, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, um, there's been a lot of goal setting that's been going on at most schools.
I know, I suppose, I do think there are a few, there's some places that are also doing student learning goals. I just can't remember off the top of my head.
Well, we had people, right, select some students that they could work on the grit goal with, like that perseverance, don't give up, keep fighting, what are you doing? And so on our, um, PD day, people just sort of picked a kid or two that they thought that might be really beneficial with, to see if they can make that connection and help that student. And, um, most of them are our kids that we're concerned about, that are at risk, that are struggling to pass classes or attendance concerns or those kinds of things. So trying to teach them about the importance of continuing to strive and struggle, um, at the same time, trying to make another connection, helping them to have another person that they know they can go to.
Thank you, thanks, Michael.
Can I ask about your, um, crisis definition? Who, who are we educating on that crisis definition?
Well, we are starting with ourselves. I mean, we asked, if you guys came to Santa and said, what, how do we define that? We've gone through several different, um, when we reach out to, um, like our state marines or the council, they all have definitions. And how does that define in book in our building? Um, and then we, I just actually sent out some ideas to the administrative team as a whole. Is this, and we're, we're trying to make it very concrete, is this is what it looks like in a student, and this is how you can tell. It's kind of easy at the elementary level. It gets really difficult at the school level, um, to what it looks like. So we're, we're constantly building and shaping what our definition is. But in terms of education, we're first educating ourselves, what does this look like? And then our, then we need to spread out, and this is what it is to staff, whether it be instructional staff, support staff, and in some cases, students, so that they understand it themselves.
Do we have a plan for that distribution? Cause I agree it needs to be broad-based.
Right now, I'm at the, and we brought up a great point, um, yesterday during our meeting, you know, just protocol-wise, how do you access, um, the crisis counselor? And that led us back to, well, what is a crisis? And so the plan right now is, and we've been conferring, um, what that is, and then we will dispatch that out, um, in a variety of ways. I think we've been doing it, like, electronically in some cases. Some people have been doing it more one-to-one. But I think it could also be rolled out faculty meeting-wise as a whole, so people can kind of grasp the concept.
Yeah, I would, at least from what I've seen on other organizations too, I would envision that, you know, you might want to incorporate some sort of programmatic thing for getting students involved of, you know, speaking up, recognizing, helping, et cetera.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the, uh, that's kind of the same mode that they use with harassment things on campuses and things like that. But so that others will engage in that process.
I think that is definitely something, um, especially to older kids, is the same, yeah, I agree, I, I agree. especially with the older kids, is the same, yeah, I agree with you, I agree. Okay, so I just have two things today. One is, I shared with you information from Lloyd Allen Brody about our participation in our school breakfast and lunch program, which is up in each building over this time last year. And though that is great, we're feeding more students and more students are participating in the program. So you have all that data there in front of you. And I think when we're looking at a couple of percentage points up at the high school, which is one of the more challenging areas to get kids to participate in school meals, I just think it's a real positive thing. Our school lunch, our school food service faculty, staff, excuse me, have really been working hard to make sure that they are getting out to as many students, encouraging students. So I just wanted to share that with you. And you have all the data there. So if you see any one of our food service staff around, please thank them for that job that they've been doing to really encourage our students to be healthy eaters. So I went to NISBA. Without Mark, I was sad. It was insane.
I was even worse.
I know, yes. You're all sad. But the, the conference was really, well, I walked in and immediately saw three people that I knew. And then on the second day, was walking down the hall and a woman behind me said, oh, look, there's sunshine. There was a window to the side. And I turned around and I said, yeah. And she looked at me and it was a woman that I hired as an instructor when I was at the Community College of Bazillion years ago. I haven't seen her in, what, 15, 16 years? We had a lovely conversation. So I got to see like a bunch, some people that I knew. And one person I didn't anticipate, she now sits on a school board. But there were three, I shared with you all of my notes and all of the PowerPoints. When you have a few minutes here and there, take a look at them, but the three big ones. Transforming School Culture with Anthony Muhammad. It's excellent. This book did not arrive at my doorstep today. I have five books coming. But I am very excited for it to come. Definitely check that one out. Emotional Intelligence with Mark Brackett. There's a lot of crossover with Conscious Discipline. He's the director of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. Great presentation about where kids are and some of the things we're seeing with students and their emotions and just how hard it is. And that's, that mental health issue and students with really volatile emotions are things we're seeing everywhere. And I don't mean everywhere. I was talking to a principal yesterday from Georgia who was talking to me after he had just sent some more students off in an ambulance for mental health issues. So it's like everywhere. It's not just our area, but it's in a bigger area. And then the last one was the State of Public Education with Chris Emdin out of Columbia Teachers College. His book will be coming as well. And that's the one, Mark, where I particularly missed you and I might have emailed you from that session. But he, but Chris talks about everything that you all and we all have been talking about, about the future of education. He was a replacement for Commissioner Elyah, who was not able to be there. Absolutely. I felt like a little bit like I was in church. I mean, very dynamic speaker, very passionate about what education is and needs to be for our students to be successful in the world. So while there are lots of other topics that I covered, if you just check out those three, those would be the, the big three to check out. I did have a chance to talk with some board members here and there from other districts about the challenges that they're facing. Everybody's talking about school aid formula. That's a big thing. And everybody's talking about mental health issues in schools. So those were the big things. So please, if you have any questions or want any more information about these sessions or any others, I'd love to just sit down and chat about it. And I can't wait for all my books to come. Thank goodness for Amazon used books. That's all I have to say.
Where are the slides for us to look at?
They should be, they should be in the folder as well.
In the same
Right, so in the Google Drive, there should be a folder for each session that has my notes and the slides. So I uploaded both.
I didn't go to Google Drive.
Okay, so the slides are there. So what I did was a document that were my own notes. I did try to do one notes on the slides using an application. That didn't work so well. So then I just did notes and then I just posted the slides. So they're all
That's on, can you pull one up?
I sent you a link, yes. So let me get to, I sent you all a link that gives you access to it.
In an email.
In an email. You go to the link, and I will show you what one looks like. So you have a folder called NISBA 2016, and there are a bunch of different individual folders. And so if you click on, let's go to Chris Emdin, because really, oh, no, he didn't have a PowerPoint. That's why you didn't see one for him. Let's go to Emotional Intelligence. That one did. So what you would see are two different documents. One is my notes. And when they reference different graphics, I just looked them up on the spot and embedded them. And then the other would be, well, that's a picture, would be the PowerPoint that's on here somewhere. So you have all the documents that were out there. Interestingly, folks who go to the conference all the time say it was not as well-attended as other years. That they believe that that might have been relative to the location. I thought Buffalo was lovely. But that's just me.
You mentioned books. Do you have something? They, they referenced a book on laws for us to follow. Do we have such a book?
The School Law?
The School Law?
Yes.
Yeah, we have one in the office.
In the office, okay. They referred to it a lot and I was like, okay, that's a really good book. I don't know where that is.
Right, yeah, no, we refer to it a lot, a lot, so.
That was one of the things. So the whole reason why Leah's here tonight is to do a follow-up on some of the questions from the audit last time. So we did a brief, a brief recap of what Amy shared with us. She did talk about the unrestricted fund balance. We did talk about the unanticipated aid. That, that question was answered. We also answered the question about the district policy on distribution of funds from dormant clubs. We do have that as well. And I've already shared that information with Ms. Leeson, so we can redistribute those funds. The, just as a point of reference, the district now has 90 days, has 90 days to submit a corrective action plan response, so we're working on that. Mark asked a question about GAAP V68 and we gave you that information. And so if you have any follow-up questions, let me know. And then there was also a question about instructional costs.
Yes. Mark, you asked, you wanted to know what the difference was between the 15, 16 instructional costs and audit in what, in the prior year, so 14, 15. So that was, and I had looked back and the increase for instructional costs went up 659,000. That was the difference. So then I looked back to see what made up that number. And there were three major categories that made up that difference. The first one was the BOSI's cost that we paid in 15, 16 were 189,000 more than the prior year. And that was mainly because the two teachers that we had doing the PTAC program in Johnstown that were out for the year. They, the way BOSI's did that was they, I came up with a cost for those teachers and they billed us. And then we paid them and then we get aid back on it. It's, it's just an accounting thing. So that's why the, the amount was so much higher. And also for some computer lab purchases that we did last year. I think in all buildings.
Yes, we went mobile with all the labs.
The second big increase was all contractual salaries. That was an increase of 321,000. So that was everybody. Total increase in all centers.
Just in time, just the teaching staff.
Right, right, right.
Does that include any new staff or is that only an increase?
That was everything.
So if there was
Salaries to salaries.
So it could, some of that could be increased staff positions then?
For 15, 16, yeah, we added
Yes, because we added a special ed classroom.
Yep, yep.
In 15, 16, that's why, because we were not able to meet the needs of some of our students. So we actually added a teacher and a classroom.
So that would be a good thing to understand, right? But that isn't just an increase. That's why it was so large.
Right, but it's also because we had to add a teacher, a teacher and a
And then the third big increase was special tuition at 165,000 and that was students being placed in programs out of the district.
Did you have to get a
Stackings, yeah.
Over a certain amount.
Were there other questions regarding the audit that have since surfaced in your experience? If the answer for each day, we can get you.
At the November meeting, hopefully we can have the corrective action plan and the update on the reserves plan.
Yeah, we have the reserves plan in November and
Those two things are
I would just like to make a comment that the accountant's idea of what is plain English, not my definition.
Not at all.
I'll leave it at that.
That didn't help very much. Said plainly. There was one other thing about the audit that I would ask that we maybe consider about putting in our corrective action response. And that was the packet discussion that we had when the audit committee met with the auditor about having, we don't want to see BOSI's that
Right, Leah's working it, yes. The quarterly claims on a report.
Yeah, I've done some research on that. And I looked up what the guidance was on the state website and the OSC website. It doesn't tell you exactly what you have to do. It just says they have to report to the board. It doesn't say, it doesn't say when, it just says they have to report.
But what we had talked about in our audit committee with the auditor was they had found some anomalies, which are in our audit, that we should request a quarterly report from them so that we can start to get ahead of it rather than have them show up at the end.
Right, right. So we're, I have, I have some samples and some ideas as to what that report would look like. Because it could be five pages, it could be one page, it could be all sorts of different formats. So we're gonna figure out what we want, how we want to report that.
I think our discussion was, what we really wanted to know is what, what non-compliance is happening, are they finding? And is this a repeated thing? So it's an education issue that we need to go fix? Or is it the same person that's just not paying attention? Or, you know, so that we can try to get ahead of it and stop them sometimes.
Has Amy shared that? Because I asked for the specifics.
Yeah, we went over it the other day.
Yes, you did. Yes, I remember. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. I remember now. Okay, so we just need to write that up in a report. Okay.
And I would suggest, since we haven't had a report from the claims, we should
Yeah, and it says, it says that they should be reporting to the board.
Correct.
So we just have to get that in a structure.
So that should come to you, Carol, and then we should review it.
Are you gonna be with your, our colleagues again tomorrow at the NASVOC conference for LSC? Oh, okay. All right. I just didn't know if Greg was gonna be there if we could connect with them so they can get on that.
Yeah, and he has given me, they've given me some samples and what other schools do or what they do for
Oh, okay.
Schools. So we just have to figure out what we want. Because there isn't just like a set.
It's not standardized for one.
It's up to us or the board or whatever.
All right, we can take a look at that.
If they want, or what's too much information, you know, what's